It is three twenty-three. Pierre, is there a motion to go back to the regular session? I'll make the motion, Gary. All those, the favor say aye?
Aye.
Number six, discussion and should be end or public action accepting right-of-way deed from Thomas Seven Albert Martin Road Extension and Authorized Michelle Bock receiving three or more bids on fencing. Mr. Charles, I know that Manuel was working with this. Is Jorge outside? Bring him inside, please. Jorge, did you sign in? We, Jorge, we add on the the deed on the right way.
So on Albert Martin, the deed is, I talked to the landowner yesterday. He should have received the LoFAR overnight package today. So I expect him to send it back either for the morning or Monday delivery. But he's already signed and authorized it. So it looks like that's going to be moving forward for the deed.
But to execute the to execute the deed, we're not going to need power, right?
That's correct.
It's already done already, so there's no signature that this be done?
Just the county, the county is the only signature pending beside the other.
Okay, so it does require a signature?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So we would need a motion to authorize, you know, the signature.
On the county.
That one just, is it gonna be the, what does that stuff is, is it gonna be right in the, next to the pavement?
You have a copy of the survey?
Fifteen.
I have the deed and I have copies of the
survey fifteen, is that you from Highway fifteen feet away from that highway?
No, it's, we, the county required additional fifteen feet of this, for a lot of it. So the system I've got is required additional fifteen.
Additional fifteen?
Yes, sir. The measure is just on the the question on the actual plan, what we've done is, depending on the pricing, but when exactly, if we're going to be bidding this as a whole, or we're going to be just doing fencing, or we're going to be doing driveways with caliche, or trying to get the scope. What we show there, what's been done, is fencing, driveways, and even a category discussed. That's what it's showing.
So you can approach, right here, is is the right-of-way, and the fence is right on the road.
Here's the sixteen, sixteen foot driveway.
But, but, but right now, if you go over here toward the end where the entrance is, the fence is abutting. Almost, on this side. Okay, we already took care of it, we're looking at the other side.
This is our
Okay, this is, this is the south side. Okay, on the south side, the fence is abutting the road a little bit. But, but before we took the fence down, the fence was right on this. So, so now he's going to have a total of thirty feet more. So, because when you first drove, you had the trees hanging over that pavement. And they cleaned it up, and it's fifteen feet, now you got thirty feet. So you ended up with thirty-four feet.
So from the fence line on the north side, you know, the fence line on the north side all the way to the other part is going to be seventy-five, seventy-five feet. Okay. And that's why the from here to here is going to be seventy-five.
So, so if assets, somebody breaks down, now we had, it was moving forward, they're not going to obstruct the traffic.
The road is about twenty-four feet. Right now, this fence, we have exactly two, is this sequence of that
And how much likely do you think it's going to extend the road now?
How much might have the road itself?
See, because before we did this, you were having to travel in the middle of the road to the self-qualification. So
No, no, this is, this is going to solve a lot of those, right now, this cattle, they're possibly going to do this, all these things. So, the pavement right now, this fence is the
And then everything is completed just from the highway that you see now going to the brush line, it's
So how mu- how much inch feet are you doing of?
It's about four, it's about eight thousand inches feet of fence. A little bit less there.
Was that a question?
But two.
Sorry, if you're on the price list, it's maybe less than the threshold is quite by law, but the question will become if we're going to do the fencing, or we're going to be doing the gates, recessive gates, all those improvements have to be a part of this. That's what we saw right now.
How many gates is a deed?
How many gates? I'm not exactly on the count of gates to go in. But I know that there's, there's, the first entrance, as soon as you pass over big bridges, the right path, a little way, what the
One more.
Close some more.
You know, not to order that first one.
First one has to come in, I think, forward.
Right after the, the, the bridges, it's going to need a funnel entrance, because you can't put a lift right on the road. Maybe it won't make it. They have to have a funnel entrance.
And that's what we saw, and we saw
A funnel, there's a big truck, and then it's going to need a cattle guard right there, because then they're going to be opening that gate. We're going to need a cattle guard at the entrance, the first
But, but
And then a cattle guard at the entrance of Colorado.
What's in that road, oil field or what?
I mean, the oil field could take the cattle guard.
Or you can put a gate, or you can put a gate, the oil field is going to say, no, I'm putting a cattle guard. So you don't tell me, no, why, you put the cattle guard there. You know, you can ask them. It would be better for them to stop there, they're open to get any time.
Is that going to be to the right? Everything to the right. And then there's a little road that comes to the right.
Coming up, what's that, one more?
I think that one more, the first, first one. And then, and then it's going to be another funnel entrance at the entrance of Colorado. And I was thinking, might as well do two big entrances, make it out of pipe, because you put the, the wire, and all those entrances, very small entrances, all that wire moves it off.
But, but you have to do the fence on one side already, right? So maybe he can help you out and do all of it, he can make all this work.
Who's going?
I mean, you all built a fence on the other side, that's why they had a fence before. And, and they never killed a cattle, now they got a highway, now he wants a fence on the other side too. I mean, we think of the right way, we talked about the fence. And I would say, you do your funnel, do a fence, do a gate. And if they want to upgrade for the cattle guard, then they can do the cattle guard upgrade on their own, on their own. And, and, and we do the fence, we give the donation. But the cattle guard, you know, upgrade would be on their own.
With those changes, I believe, we'll be under the threshold.
And, but we'll keep hoping that, that they feel there should be some other reason, that we should fix on the cattle guard, that's going to be very bad.
I know there's several new roads that the evidence has on the other side too. And I didn't want to just pension out. But I talked to Jorge, my thinking was, put sixteen-foot gates along all these roads, you know. I'd rather have wider entrances, you know, the, the, you know, sixteen-foot gates. And that way, you know, he has access, he's not, we're going to shut them down, and I don't think he's going to have. Just a, just a place, a gate, you know, two edge breaks down inside. And just follow in that first one, that's the bridge, and it's coming over that Colorado. They, they and, and not something that's the end, you know, you're still going to go along that
Because it doesn't have a cattle guard, right? It doesn't have a cattle guard there that's entirely a possibility, it's only replaced what's there.
No, there's nothing, it's just the third hook that comes off that same hook.
If it had a cattle guard, it could But you can ask them, you know, by the gate, you can put them up. They didn't have nothing before.
But, you know what, we're
There's been a fence there. It was just so close to the road, it's so close to the road. It didn't have an end, you jump on the highway, it was just one piece of one, on one side. You know.
And then at the very end, all the regular gates to the right would be sixteen-foot. And I think at the end was two twelve-foot, I think I got it.
That's what we saw.
Two twelve-foot, right? Would you make a big entrance, if one day they want to go, you know, or a road or something, they got, you know, enough space.
But, but that's kind of the thing we could do, now the story, we're just backing when we can expand. Make it wider than we can, that way it's done. Yeah, they could say, somebody made it down or something.
Or
Yeah, so who can beat them halfway on the, on the fencing, you know, we do the fencing. And then, it's, 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 it's a mistake I was about to say. So I would make a motion that, one, we authorize you to execute the deed, final deed. And, two, you get the prices, try to get three bids, if possible, you know. But if it's over fifty thousand, you gotta advertise.
Then I'll keep telling you the material, and, and if it's the material, I'll take the gamble.
You think so?
It's two point three miles.
No.
Eighty-two.
What, one ten mile?
Fifty-two eighty is a mile.
Why is it forty? Why do you put that? So you think it'll be over fifty?
At that price, at the prices you've been seeing, you know, twenty thousand, fifteen thousand miles.
Five hundred.
About three, four dollars a foot, but it is a fee. It's five strand, American made wire, very, it's the exact same amount we did on the mortgage.
How far apart is it?
Seven thousand dollars a mile. Maybe it'd be twelve feet?
Ten feet, no, but there's actual, it's like seventy-two eighty feet.
A mile is seven thousand dollars a foot. That's what I'm saying. Yeah. Seven thousand a mile.
I think it's a funny
But, but this is where I would, instead of having to come back, getting the measure, and then I didn't say this, or did say this, change it. I'd say, I would do the motion to authorize Michelle Bock to execute the deed, wanted given. Then, to get three bids, and if the bids come out more than fifty thousand, then advertise. And then they come to us. But that, that pretty much is the going back and forth, back and forth.
But I
You know, so he didn't get the three bids, whatever the lowest he could get at.
Yeah. And, and it'll be similar, we'll, we'll get three bids, due by a certain date, certain time here at the courthouse, and when they come in, we'll present them, and at that point, they're paying the prices.
No, no, because it's told that a lead
Oh, no, no, yes, yes.
Only if it goes over the fifty thousand dollar mark, that, that is, we have to put it to pay.
And then we're going to give the faster process, and then I'm glad I did this, go ahead and have that contract to go ahead and buy everything.
Yeah.
It's turkey.
You know, when you buy everything, you're not, you have to go get anything.
Yeah. You can have your buyer, and then we'll give one part.
Give one part, and then we'll
You can give him a couple of permits.
A couple of that.
You can give him a couple of permits.
A couple of that. Like every other week, like I think there, you know, you can give him a couple of permits, you know, you know, progress, construction progress.
Maybe two pairs of the mortgage.
Yeah.
So we'll set all that up, so that it's it's like
Just like a contractor. And that would be my recommendation for this, you know, because because all you have to do is tell Ace, this if you knew for so much money, it would be that. That's a cheaper place to buy. Thank you. All right, let's go with your recommendations.
You made the motion here, second?
Second, please. No, we're only here a few seconds. Okay. The motion has been made, the second. All those, the favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Number seven, discussion public action. Of status of Ludwig Road upgrade. And if you remember, a number of years ago, Ludwig Road, which is around Gardanelle, between Gardanelle and Millet. They, you know, wanted to close that road, and we decided to upgrade it, and we went through a whole process with Union Pacific. And we got that cleared up. There's a motion, we've been working on that, George has been working on that. So, the last thing I heard, we have a contract with, with Union Pacific that's been done, I thought we executed. And we're waiting on the Ludwig Family Trust to determine, you know, if they're going to give us the property or not. Mr. Ramos, can you bring us up to date?
Commissioners, you're correct. This thing has taken a lot longer than we anticipated. The Ludwig family hired a, they, they took some time to finally get the deed from them. We've been assured, an attorney, that the Ludwig family has signed off on the deed, and it's in brutal order. But I've been waiting for it all week, I'm, I'm sure it's on its way, but we haven't received it. In the meantime, I received a, a form of contract that Union Pacific typically uses for these type of crossings. And I haven't gone through it completely, but I, I have highlighted some of the portions of it. And the one that's very significant is, and the county needs to understand this, that if the county goes through with this project, the county is going to have to bear all of the expense relating to the upgrading of that crossing. Now, in the contract that's before me, or proposed contract, because I've got some objections to some parts of it, but anyway. The estimated cost to the county would be four hundred and seventy-five thousand, four fifty-seven. Now, a concern that I have, that is not a fixed figure, that is a, a figure that, it's an estimate at this point. Which, to me, knowing how contracts go and how companies are, I anticipate that there will probably be some cost overruns over that. And, so that is a significant figure that obviously the commissioners in the court needs to, need to consider. It looks like we finally got the deed, like I, like I said, the second issue now is, is the county still willing to, to go through it? And if, and if the county is considering it, and again, I'll emphasize that the, all of the upgrading would be at the cost of the county, and, and it appears to me that they're going to upgrade and put arms, crossing arms there and lights. All of that in the future would be maintained, I would expect, by Union Pacific. Because a lot of the litigation at these crossings relate to a failure to properly maintain the, the, the crossing. And as a result of that, there's an accident, there's been a number of accidents at this crossing. So if the commissioners are still of the belief that they want to go through this, then obviously I need a green light. And what I would do then is, is go through the, through the contract and you know, analyze the contract and perhaps make some suggested changes. So that's kind of where we are. I, I, I have to believe that the deed is on its way, and we should be getting it. So now, the issue is, do we still go through the, with the project?
One of the things that we talked about originally, well, there's a couple of things. Is at one point, Carrizo Oil was going to help. And I don't know what the status is, we'd have to reach out to Silver Boston. The second thing is, this four hundred and seventy-five thousand is only half the amount of the original budget. So why change?
Part of that, part of that estimate includes, what they're quoting on that price is not looking to do with the road itself. This is just the crossing arms, some of the major crosses the railroad has, they're still a component for the road and approach improvements.
Sorry, I didn't hear you, Jorge, but I thought I heard you say that this was half of the estimated cost of, of something?
Well, the original budget I saw was a bit more, eight hundred, nine hundred dollars. And, and the price that you gave me is about four seventy-five. So we're also looking at the development of the property that's going to be purchased from the, or acquired by the Ludwig Family.
And the road, wiring, everything, it's associated, so it is still the same budget by eight hundred and seventy thousand, but this component is more primarily on the road side. So that is, that's why you're saying two different.
So the four seventy-five is only the Union Pacific safety equipment?
Yes, and the upgrade.
But does it include the county portion on the roadway?
That's correct. This is only the crossing, and it's an estimated amount, it's going to be at least four seventy-five. I don't know how much more in Jorge, you may, you may have a better idea, but I anticipate some, some overruns. Now, one way of, of addressing that, that becomes a concern to the court, is to set a limit and say, but in no event shall we cover more than X number of dollars over the four seventy-five. A fixed amount, or we could say, no more than, than five percent of that amount, or ten percent. I, I don't like contracts that are open-ended, because my experience has been that you end up with some substantial overruns, and I know that money is tight right now. So assuming that the court would be willing to consider this, that would be one of my, my suggestions, and others, to this form of agreement.
I know when we first covered it, Mr. Ramos, we were looking at eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars. That's when Mr. Nolhouse was here. And although Carrizo Oil and Gas has promised, I know, had promised to stay involved, we've never received anything in writing from them, so we're at the point where we can start letting it out for bids. And this is one of the projects that was identified by the county before we did any of the other projects. This was first identified years ago. And so it's one of the oldest projects that we have that have not started because of all of the different obstacles set by, leaving all the railroads. You know, their engineers and their, the people have really delayed it, fees that you have to pay. So I think the goal is, is to get everything straight, we got all the deeds, then go ahead, we're ready to authorize the bids, put out the bids, and let them out. I mean, I think that would be the best choice.
Goes the way
Yeah.
Last time I spoke to Mr. Davis regarding, because he did indicate at the beginning, and we talked about this years ago, that he wanted to contribute. When I spoke to him about that, to get a dollar figure, I think he was a little hesitant at that point to commit. And I think he stated that there were, you know, some cutbacks at that point in time, so we can still reach out to him and see if he'd be willing to.
But, but in reality, there are a number of oil companies that have been very strong and faithful and supportive, and there's been others that, that will talk, but never deliver anything. So this may be the case to where, you know, this company really hasn't done anything major impact to any of our roadway projects in the county, and I like Chesapeake.
And I think for the commission, for the courts, said, I guess, peace of mind. We should get, if we're going to rely on oil companies, we should get something in writing where they commit to something. Because right now, with all due respect to, to the companies, we don't have anything in writing, and as we all know, oil and gas companies right now are hurting big time.
Mr. Ramos, when we first started this meeting, and we started this project, and when the landowners were there, they offered. But I didn't expect it, because we knew we have to come through with this project regardless, because we don't want those landowners shut out. So this is, I think, first identified around 2014, that we started it. So our, our, even though they offered, never expected, never pushed them, because I didn't expect to see anything. And I hate to be that way, but it's just, we've been in business now, in the county, or in the whole company, for a number of years, and some companies are very good at supporting local communities, others have not been as supportive. And, and I hate to be abrupt, but this company has not been that supportive of the community. Others, small, small things for law enforcement, but, but not major like, like, as I said, Chesapeake, even, even Del Paso, that's a major dollar, up there in sports, big building. You know, Al Darko, there's some companies that really, really kicked in to, to help us out, and others that haven't. So I think we're on our own, we get the bids, try to get competitive pricing, and we have, we have slowed down the oil, the economy, and we've seen it before, we saw it in those seven, that we may have some very competitive bidding, how many prices are going down? Is that, I mean, that's what I suggest, all of this.
You think we need to get it that way? So maybe we can get a cheaper.
Yeah, it's taken six years to get to this point with Union Pacific to do the work. So, I mean, and I, I don't want to use it, you know, I don't think we want to lose it. Let's proceed, maybe.
Tom, if I'm clear, once we acquire the deed for the acquisition, and the railroad agreement is authorized for signature, we can advertise.
Yes, sir. This is one of the original projects that was developed and chosen as your CIP projects or Yeah, projects, this is one of the first ones that was identified. So this is one of the ones that we have to come through. We've got some other projects there that we need to come back, probably see how much cash we have, but this is one of the ones that was originally budgeted, and the money was there, and it wasn't full mouth. You know, if the whole company picked it, it's great, but I didn't expect it. And then I don't want to sound horrible, but the facts are the facts, is we got some companies that have been very good and working in South County and up in the ground, you got to leave that that have not had a good, strong
And, and the crossing will be of great benefit to the oil companies, so it would seem to me that they, they should be supportive of the county's efforts to upgrade that crossing. And I would think also that the landowners should be supportive and, and just donate the land to the county, assuming that the economics otherwise are there for the county, but
The biggest concern is, when they close a road, is that we have to find the alternative, and that cost of alternative is going to exceed far more than what this project should have done. And we remember, we were doing this because Union Pacific wanted to close a project because of the number of accidents that were happening there. So they wanted to close a number of crossings, this is the first one they identified, because they've had a number of accidents. So all this should increase the safety of other people traveling within that area, and and as far as keeping this way, rather than going through the four sixty-nine route.
One, one of the things that, that I think is important to the court, whether the, the crossing is upgraded the crossing is upgraded or not, the Ludwig family put a, a, a kind of a ranch entrance, right at the entrance, it says Ludwig Road. And some people read that to, to, to mean that that road from that point forward is a private road, when we all know it's a county road, so I, I, I would recommend to the court that at, at a minimal, that sign be, or that entrance be relocated to either side but off the road so that people don't say, well, no, no, they've got their own sign on a, on a county road. I think that would be a, a step that we should take, uh, irrespective of whether we upgrade the, uh, the crossing or not.
The Ludwig family explained to Commissioner Ariado that they would remove it, but if they don't, what we can do is put a supplement into the bid package to relocate it as part of the bid package. So as a separate al- alternate.
It, it could just be put off to the side, just so long as it's not over the traveled portion. I, I understand that they wanna advertise their ranch.
It's been a couple of years, I believe the family had said that they would move it, and they may need some type of boom to move it. But, but we can note it as an alternative, just in case, that way we don't have to come back to the commissioner's court, um. Yeah, and, and you were there at that meeting, uh, on the third floor, I'll just get it going and see what we decide. So thank you. So thi- this would, would be, um, authorization, uh, to, uh, accept the donation of deeds, it'd be donation deeds, right? Or right-of-way, uh, right-of-way acquisitions from, uh, the related parties to, uh, the Ludwig Road, which would be Chapman. And authorized to put out bids for the construction banking projects on Ludwig Road. And what other action would be necessary?
Uh, it's upon the agreement being signed.
Uh, upon, upon, uh, upon the, uh, Union.
Yes, I, I would condition it on the, the, the county being able to negotiate an agreement that would be palpable to the commissioner's court, not only financially, but also with its provisions. Uh, because a, a, a straight-out acceptance without a condition could commit the, the county to go through that whole project and, and, uh, uh, I would hope that Union Pacific would, would be sensitive to the wishes of the county, but we're not at that point, and we haven't negotiated the, the finer terms of the agreement, so.
I, I thought we had already agreed on that.
No, no, we had not, and, and, and you and I, Judge, I think we're a little confused. We agreed on the agreement for the overpass uh, along thirty-five, further south. And we had worked on this agreement, but then we were having issues with the Ludwig's in that. So we kind of put it in a back burner pending the, uh, getting the commitment from the Ludwig's, and I think we're there. Uh, and, and Jorge, what I'm not sure is whether or not the Ludwig family is going to be compensated for the right-of-way, honestly, I just, I don't remember that.
My understanding it was gonna be a donation.
They're not?
Is what? My understanding is it was gonna be a donation.
A donation, that's, yeah, that's, that's very important, because that'll really increase the price. So. And, and the other thing, I, and, and Judge, maybe, I don't know, um, but it, it seems to me that we ought to try and get the oil companies that are actively using that road to contribute to some level, to help the county uh, with this expenditure. Because they're the ones that are having all the accidents. Although candidly, this is a bad time to be asking for, for money.
Hey, Mr. Ramos, I have the email here back November thir- thirteen, two thousand nineteen, and Michelle sent to Jorge, myself, Mr. Rios, Maria Perez, and yourself. Just thank you, George, could I get a copy and expedite agreement for my file, which was referenced Ludwig Ranch Road, U P updated agreement folder, forty-nine twenty-seven dash sixty-seven? And and previously she had sent an email to me, the more you just follow it, was the agreement going to be executed? Are there issues needed to be addressed? So I was thinking that we did have a final agreement.
I, I could be wrong, Judge, I could be wrong.
But, but it, it's possible, uh, they throw through the track.
No, so, say no clarification, that, we did, the county did execute that agreement, and it was submitted to U P. And since then, they've come back with a, a, a couple of different documents, uh, recently, with a couple of changes.
So we executed the agreement with Union Pacific, and, and, and now they made some changes to the agreement? So we're back.
Some format, it was formatted, some template, they mentioned. Ivan Heinrich.
Heinrich, did he retire? Well, he moved to another step, and then that's why everything got changed.
Yeah, 'cause I was dealing with Ivan Heinrich.
Yes.
But Judge, did the, did Union Pacific sign that?
No, they, there's two changes that they wanted to address. And what we need to do, if we're not there yet, instead of being colling this, address those changes beforehand and have a separate meeting and bring it back to another meeting.
Yeah.
And table it, and table it. We got a lot of moving then. So I, I would say let's table it, let's find out what, what those two changes are, and we come back and address it at a, at the next meeting. Let's table it. Motion's been made in second, um, table number seven. All those in favor say aye, aye, all of the votes. Number eight, discussion possible action to accept and award bids for precinct number one material. And where are these materials gonna go?
Precinct one, uh, we, we advertised for bids for, uh, L R A materials, for precinct one for four roads. We identified them at Spready Cops Road, Johnson Ranch Road, Harvey Smith Road, and Bena Road. Uh, the intent was for the material to be delivered to each road, uh, estimated amount of fifty loads per, per road. Um, the way this bid was advertised, it's a unit price with an estimated amount of five thousand tons. But, uh, if you look at the actual bid, uh, we got one bidder today, and the bids were due at eleven. Uh, we reviewed it, and, uh, the pricing that was identified on the bid from Vulcan came in at sixty-two dollars and one cent per ton. This, uh, this item, uh, if you recall, the last time we went out for this material, it was for Commissioner Amidis. Uh, the last thing was closer to about sixty-eight dollars per ton, now it's at sixty-two dollars a ton, one cent. So we're estimating five thousand tons based on the number of loads the commission had requested.
So what's the total price?
The total price estimated is three hundred and ten thousand dollars and fifty, even. Now, just to be, understand that that is an estimated amount, the county can opt to add or subtract depending on the actual need, but the unit cost is what's gonna dictate the, the amount that is ordered by the county.
What's the unit cost?
Sixty-two dollars and one cent per ton.
Delivered?
Delivered to, uh, each one of these roads.
And the whole precinct?
Uh, four roads in the precinct, yes, and those roads were identified.
And can that price piece of state be delivered to other precincts? Or to precinct one, according to?
According to the bid, it was only for that one. So, I mean, we can always go advertise, if the intent is to get more of this material, we can always advertise to those roads, or just leave it open-ended county-wide, instead of looking at it per road and per area, county-wide.
So and there was only one bidder?
One bidder came in, it was Vulcan, uh, so they're the only.
And you put it in the newspaper for two weeks?
It was advertised, two weeks, and the bid in the newspaper, we posted on Supcast.
Also, it's better than what you're.
It's a plan room online. Yes, sir, that's a public plan room that we post, so everybody has access.
So, so Commissioner Jara, think that's the only bid you have the option of, accepting the bid or, you know, denying the bid?
I'm gonna accept the bid.
So is that before a motion? Is there a second? Okay, yeah, we can bring it back, Jorge. So, uh, motion's been made by Commissioner Jara in second.
Second.
By Bujadva, since that, the one and only bid, um, four sixty-two dollars, uh, Union Pacific?
And one cent.
And one cent? And, and who's, uh, contracted?
It's Vulcan materials.
Vulcan material out of Nevada?
Yes, sir.
Um, one material delivered. Is there any further discussion? There being on all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All of the votes, same side.
Judge, I don't think I have any more items on the agenda.
Um, there are a couple of things that we're gonna cover.
Okay, let's find it, that's fine.
And I'll jump to number twelve.
No, no problem, no problem.
Discussion possible action on status of C C P R project, county annex and Insignia Community Center and Library. One is the county project is the move, that he did the work, the legal work on the move, which is a contract by Anderson Columbia. Um, and they're about to finish the project, and the coordinator could give us an update. One is, I don't know if they have rain days or order of construction, and that's gonna follow the same thing with the county act, and the Insignia Community, uh, Center and Library.
Okay, so for the, the bypass, uh, I spoke to the contractor this week. They're expecting opening the road at the county's request within a week, if you would like. Uh, there's a couple of safety items that are still pending. Uh, they were waiting for them to complete, so we can inspect it and approve it. Uh, one of them being at the State Highway ninety-seven intersection is a plastic vehicle that we need to have installed prior to opening, and a few signs that are still pending, uh, you know, stop signs, speed limit signs that are still pending. If those are in, as like they said, within a week they can open, which would be a week from this Friday. Now, I know we talked about, uh, groundbreaking, we talked about curbs, we have different things that we need to look at, so if the county elects to, to set a specific date, post it in the newspaper, we can set it for that day. Uh, as far as the contract with rain days, uh, as of this past pay-up, we got, well, pay-up number twenty-six, they're at a hundred and, over a hundred and twenty days of, of dilapidated damages at this point. And it's gonna fluctuate depending on when they finish the work, it's still pending. So that number will be fine tuned, but you can expect there's about a hundred and twenty-something days that are gonna be, uh, over. When you consider rain days, everything on there, that's what it's gonna look at. The county has to decide at that point contractually if they're gonna wanna enforce those dilapidated damages. Uh, as far as for pay applications and everything that's pending, we will be coming back to the commissioners for a final change order to a- address all the overages and under, uh, under quantities on all the bid items on this project, which means if they had so many tons of asphalt, we're only gonna pay them what they actually installed. So some of the items were higher, some of the others were lower, so we'll come into, do a final change order for that. That same change order will likely address dilapidated damages as well.
If, if during the project with Anderson Columbia, there were some issues that we brought up relating to fencing, that I think the commissioners brought up, uh, you know, if those fencing issues were addressed.
The fencing, so I, I'm recommending what I'd like to do this coming week, and see, we can schedule a walk-through with the commissioners uh, of the project, and this will be a cursory walk-through, and the intent is for y'all to see it, I don't know if you've been out there in a while, it's still under construction. We can go out there and walk it, see any issues that you have. We still have to do our punch list, Tech dot still has to do their punch list, so there's still items that will be pending. But I wanna make sure we cover and satisfy everything that the commissioners have, uh, requested uh, regarding the fencing and some of the other things that we solved, you know, months ago.
Be, before we open it, one, is just do the punch list. And if you get a raise, I'm sure they, they give commissioners on one day, give commissioners on the other. That way, we don't have a forum. Uh, that way, because they each have different views and everybody takes a different difference. We do that. We walk through the punch list, and then if we can't have any type of ceremony, hopefully this wiring stuff will die down, where we can determine a date before it's open. But let's, let's just take care of the punch list first. Let Mr. Ramos look at, uh, the rain day. I don't remember, it was two thousand dollars or one thousand dollars?
It's one thousand.
One thousand dollars. So theoretically, they, they owe a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on that.
And I say, once we get the final number.
Kind of work it in and out of the punch list.
Now, I, I will tell you that this has been very cooperative at this point, and I know that they, they've had their delays and they had their issues, but they've been cooperative through the whole process. Uh, they're willing to work with the county however they need, but we still need to address.
But, but some of it has been related to Union Pacific.
That's correct.
So some of it was beyond our control.
That's correct.
You know, but, but we did see a lot of names where there was no activity, no work, no people out there from here that retired to work, you know, what was happening. And, but Evans is a good, strong company, he's been around a long time. We wanna make sure that we're fair and working, and we're willing to get the best of the bid.
Like, find the bid that Ludwig dropped as well.
So, so we're working.
Yes, sir.
Now, if that's okay with you, I mean, y'all go look at the project, and then we try to, I wouldn't like that, I think, because that's the biggest project in the act. Huh? Now, they, you remember that, that was actually something that was voted by the people that they wanted to do the move.
And I wanna make sure that before this thing's open, is that we have all the safety items addressed, punch list?
Eight hundred, eight hundred and five hundred. Yeah, there you make, yeah.
What we don't wanna do is open the road and then have a couple items that need to be addressed and close it back up. The idea is open it and forever for it to be open. Uh, so, like you said, let's go through the punch list, let's address them. We're gonna still have to do our homework and our punch list, aside from that, and so is Tech dot, so we wanna make sure it's all covered.
So there we go. So now, let's go to, no, we, we, we think it actually, we've got a number of items there. So we'll probably just table it, let me show you part of the quote. We still got the county annex, the Insignia Community Center and the library. And, and I, I did a walk with the library, and there's a couple of things that need change orders. Is the pans in, in the kitchen, the drain pans are very, very small. You can't wash a big pan in it, and the, the ladies that work in the kitchen brought that, my, that's a big reflection stamp. The, the drain in there is maybe one inch? It's not gonna, it's not gonna serve a person, other than splashy water and whatever we're doing in. So I don't know if it's a power line issue or contractor issue, but we need to get that changed out. The oven is very small, it's gonna be hard to cook big things. So we need to look at the oven to make sure if that stove doesn't work, that we need to make sure we get an oven in there that's gonna serve the people that do not. And we brought somebody to the bedroom as well. Um, it doesn't look like, I don't see him finishing by the fifteenth, but the kitchen and the building itself may be ready by fifteen.
What do you say, like, do you guys need a bigger, a bigger stove?
Well, what happens is you have to have a stove, big, big case, or big something, you gotta. Well, what happens is, you have to have a stove, big, big case, or big something, you gotta have the stove, and even though it's a big ten burner, it's not big enough in there to even put anything in. So, I don't know if there was an issue that would reidentify it, our staff that made the mistake, that didn't look at it, or it was a contractor issue, but this is still brand new, that you could return it, you've already used, and get an upgrade, and get the right one in, rather than use it and then have to buy another little pound dollar stove later.
And it doesn't look like it's kind of, probably to be bigger with the same, same size.
Yeah, they're different sizes. They got different, or 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 they can order a separate oven, separate cooking unit, because they ordered a couple things that probably would need, and maybe you can trade them out. You can trade them out. But like the sink, in a construction stand, it's only like a one inch ditch, I mean, it it really, it doesn't feel a purpose. And it has a grinder, I mean, it doesn't make any sense to have a grinder on a sink that has a one inch bucket. And it's not a bucket, it goes straight down, it slopes this way, so when you open it, the first thing is gonna go, last one of that here. And and the kitchen, and and sinks, and, you know, elderly, you have three compartments, so you can't put little, little people pants washing their knees. So, they're better off, you need a sink that's good, you know, you can wash your pans, because they're gonna be washing up here, and I'd be with the kids to wash it here. So, the sinks are probably commercial for small restaurants, you know, small mom and pop, but it's not so big facility. So, so, but sometimes, it may be our mistake, it may be, but before the cans, you could probably get credit for it. Because once you open it up, it's gonna be almost impossible to get them out. But and that's the only thing I heard, other than toilets are, uh, metal, and the ladies know like the metal is is gold. So, I do not know if they're ADA compatible, if they're not ADA, then we can get ADA compatible.
You're interested, they do the way.
I'll think of you. If you can have, if there's nothing, you don't wanna break it down.
Yeah.
Or if if they're gold.
That's like, could your house over there?
But yeah, they they look nice. So, this is our only chance to change those out now before, because
Now, sometimes.
I mean, if you wanna put the metal on the outside, that's fine, but in the inside, just take care of the right. We've waited this long.
Have we stopped the architect on that today?
Mr. Ramos, they gave you a date of the fifteenth, right, or, uh?
We, we, that was a date that we, they said they could do it, however, uh, there was no mediated settlement agreement, so it was a verbal thing. Uh, so, the answer is, there is no fixed deadline, although they've told us verbally that they would be there by May fifteenth, because as you may recall, Judge, we we couldn't agree on the, on the settlement terms.
Well.
One thought I had on that stove, I wonder if it meets the specs that they had for the stove.
And and it's possible, our error, uh, sometimes they're looking at catalog and not looking at dimensions. So, you know, but but let's get that corrected now. The annex is almost done, and once that's accepted, and we may wanna start through the annex first, then that way we can start margin transition to the third part. We do need to have the open record, or, uh, the archive agreement for each of the people that have been putting in, like, shared often. So we wanna make sure they put in their contract, having to report, who are they gonna store this, what are they gonna keep? Because we want, we we don't want outdated, molded records going in there. Otherwise, it'd be perfect. And I don't know what the statute of limitations would take, you have an idea of it?
Only, the one I can remember is seventy-five years.
Seventy-five years?
Yeah, some of them are.
But, uh, yeah, so we can assign, assign it, so we can have, so we can have, uh, use of it, oh, we got all the written. So for, for, uh, the Incinell Center, it looks like the center building to be finished by the fifteenth, so we wanna make sure we can follow up on the change orders for the sinks, and the toilets, and the toilets, and do some damage with the oven. The annex, we're gonna be looking at, at, um, getting a date with market, and start moving in. Looks like they're almost done, it looks really, really close, they can give us a date.
Uh, I think, it next.
You know, we get two big old boxes in the front, anyway, we, something. I mean, and they're, they're real nice, and I think trees will be. And then it's It's gonna be cheaper for us to get someone else to trim it, and maybe get, uh, I just even, there used to be a farmer that would trim trees, I don't know, there was somebody else, but you can only get chopped to, you got a man that's rather, I thought, probably rubbish. Or if you wanna trim it yourself, you want him to trim it, I I I.
I wanna do it at the same here.
You got the man that tr- trim it, and it's, he the only thing is, be careful with the bees.
Make sure there's time and comfort already, you know, develop, discover, design.
How we can, huh? Always, always, they always have, always, under the box. And then you're always, but, and then you're a very careful.
No.
But by not about, that's okay, there's, that, it's more nice. Yeah. Look at that. At the library, where are we at the library?
The library at the, at the, at the Incinell Community Center, that's the, they both have the same date, because that was, that, library was added to the contract. That's all for CPAC.
So, on on these projects, the one in Incinell, the one here, I know we had promised to do rest of it at the moment, so let's say by the end of the week, when we look at, maybe, I'd still say, let's start the negotiations, let's start the planning, and then, at least have it ready, and then add something. Because the the this project, it is now the biggest project they've had, probably, ever. The people, my son, they're, they should be, they should be, this is the biggest project they've had in many, many years. Bosses in jail was constructed there, this is about thirty million dollars, but Bill, this is the next biggest project. I'm gonna, huh? The hard station is still, but, but, three million, four million dollars, but this is bigger, but this is a big project. So I think they'd be happy with, with where we're going from, and it should be like that. So, is there any action needed from us right now?
No, there's just a lot of things, everything's a while in progress.
Mr. Ramos, you'll continue to work with the contractor and the attorneys to make sure we do get profit credit for, for delays?
Yes, that's, that's in, that's in our lawsuit, and, uh, my hope, Judge, is that they have everything finished by the fifteenth. What I do think we need to do is, if we're going to get them to replace the stoves, we better notify them pretty quick. Uh, and I don't know if that's something that the architect should do, or Jorge, or, or me.
I spoke to him, I did a walk through yesterday or the day before, and they said, because of coronavirus, it's very hard to get some things, but but sometimes, it may not be really true. You know, I think if vendors starting to open up, it may be easier to get some product right now. So, um, that being the case, then, I'll just table this until we can bring it back up. Is there more simple, should I, okay. Second. And my. Motion's been made, second, table until we bring it back up. Then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, gonna jump to number ten, discussion possible action on the South County dialysis plant, including, uh, the other actions necessary, uh, there too.
I wanted to pass out, uh, give you an update, do the action items that are still pending for that, be a reflag. And I'll pass out, uh, now.
So we do replag, is that an action by the commissioner's board?
It is, it's gonna be an action by the commissioner's board, you know, get proofed, it's just the actual, the way you wanna see it. That's that's what we need to action, sorry, you look at, you see that, pass out. That reflects the actual plan, where you see, uh, how the lots were laid out when the plan was created, and you see the dialysis kind of site plan, you wait, that's sort of what it's gonna look like, and I've also brought, uh, copies of the data site down, again, that we're working on. Um, what we're trying to show on this replag is how we're gonna configure the blocks once the county approves the layout of how it's gonna look.
Have you shown this, Mr. Shaw?
No, I haven't, uh, and I keep making forward all this to, 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 um, one of the things that that I would like to address that came out, uh, when we did our review search, is the, the deed that was conveyed to, um, has incorrect information, has wrong lot numbers on the deed and on the survey. Um, and I recommend, and I'm just chances on here, is that if you can do a correction deed, go back to the on, get a correction file, correct that, because property that it's showing on the, on the deed is red, it's the wrong boundary, and that's, we recommend. I brought copies of the, the plan, just to show, uh, how, how this, what it should be, what it should be correct, but I I can pass it on. As a copy of the deed, it was.
So, in this that you're showing me here, is the black is what's there now?
Yes, sir.
But the red is what you prefer, and you wanna change it?
That's my proposal, layout, so the idea is, the LBD Nutrition Center, it may have its own, completely, completely housed lot, the dialysis is due also the other hole, and there would, there would be two lots on the back for whatever the county desires. So, the dialysis, that is only, based on, right now, or what we present on the plan, they have.
Can you see there, Mike?
It's there, it's right here, the first one's low right now.
No, no, maybe a bit.
A little closer. So, so the black is the original, and the red is his proposed, uh, what he proposes.
The the black is what?
Is the original survey.
Okay.
And then he's proposing, uh, to replag it under the red line.
Okay, um, all right, okay, the, it looks like it's already set up for multiple structures, am I correct?
Yes, it is, but what happens is, this is the nutrition center we purchased, it sits on two pieces of property.
Uh-huh.
So he broke it up to where the center is just on one flat.
Okay.
And the whole dialysis is on another flat, and it leaves these two sections by themselves, separate, that could be later sold or developed separately, in separate deed.
Uh-huh, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
We we have different ones, so, so this is the recorded plat?
Showing separate, showing the separate.
So this is the recorded plat?
Yeah.
So where's that, this?
These are the three lots that are owned.
Those three right there.
Yeah, these are the three lots owned by the county.
Okay. No, the replat makes sense.
So he's gonna re- replat this right here?
Yes.
And the county owns this also next to the nursing, I mean, next to the cemetery, it's a little cemetery right there.
Okay.
So basically, he's gonna break this into four.
Uh-huh.
Uh, and then there's some corrections that need to be made.
Yes.
So, just to kinda give you an idea where we're at. President, when we, what actually do you need from us? You need us to authorize the charonist to proceed with correcting the plat? With the deed, correcting the deed, um, correcting the deed from SD Development Partners LP and Catoon Development LLC, and authorizing to, uh, to make a necessary, uh, correction to correct the plat? The lot numbers on the plat, or on the replag?
On the deed, the lot numbers on the year. The medical license, the rest of it.
Okay, let's start back. The motion would be first to authorize Mr. Shaw to see, to correct the warranty deed, uh, lot numbers, uh, from the grantor, SD Development Partners LP and Catoon Development LLC, and and get it recorded. So that's the first task. The second task is to authorize him to, uh,
Oh, is, is y'all, is y'all telling me this, this, this configuration that I'm showing, for four lots?
I- i- is the conversion of the existing plat to to four, to four lots. Okay. So then I would need that for motion. Need, uh, motion to authorize first, which would be allowing Mr. Shaw to see to get a correct the deed from SD Development LP and Catoon Development LLC, and have him correct the lot numbers recorded, and then allow him to work with forehead to have a replag of of the plat except for the and then since I've said it, so it may take some work going through the city.
I have to go through.
So, it takes some work.
And then just so you know, that replat that I'm showing, the way it's configured, it's a dialysis permit on its own, the LBD Nutrition, as it stands right now, is on its own, and there'll be two remaining lots on the back, the county, whatever they decide to do.
That 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 way it'll be separate.
It'll be separate, and the idea, my thoughts are, just to future dialysis permit, you know, it's a county facility now, in twenty years from now, they can always, it's a little easier to track that.
Well, if we ever wanna sell it or need to sell it, it can be sold, and we don't sell everything, because we got a separate, uh, we got it right now, we got everything at the front, and the two lots on the back, and how are they gonna get back there?
There's, uh, CC's visitor, propose on the side, is that any commercial complex?
And there's also access from the other side, but but the thing is, when the state asks us to put up, and we have a grant, we'll give you, you don't wanna put up all the property, so you wanna break it up to where, you know, you don't wanna give it all up. Yeah, but what I'm saying is that, that we're using two front parts, and the back, why would you have to be me? I mean, I mean, you can make it two equal flats, but but then, you're gonna put that whole lot, you're gonna have, have that whole lot as, uh, you're not gonna have it separate.
Is there any way we could put that, the dialysis, the, falls back on, on the lot of the back?
No, you wanna. I mean, they can move it all the way to the back, but 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 based on the sewage and the cost.
Won't be able to move the lot. Right now, except for it's sewn, it's what they, you all have to increase.
The lots in the back, they didn't deserve any, because they're.
No, it's, in fact, you need lots around here, and pieces around here. Always, there's always.
There's always even needment right there in the middle, that way.
Yeah, but, yeah, because, I'm moving that out there.
No, there won't be lots out, you still have a needment.
Where, that, that nutrition center right there, that's their party yet, that's what they're.
They're willing that road that they need.
Sometimes it closes at weekends, and then people, you know, what are you gonna do back here, and you didn't have to come to there.
No, but what do, what do you, what do you, what do you, the, the?
He's got a wheel, she wants to get her, she want, people gotta, she wants to get, who's this? Rosie. Put you on the side, you just.
They already got a gig here, and, 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 you just, what is still, you want?
I mean, we, we could come back and decide if you're willing, or you think I'm ever saying? We decide for the rule you're willing. But we, we decided we had that.
So, the entire property is still county, so if you, if you wanna demo all the parking around the back, it's not being used, like, you could still do that.
That's not a line on the, next to that dialysis, that would be a separate entrance for them, or do, do some entrance?
Definitely, definitely, they will make it come this way, cause there's another deed to there. And then it's just, you can do that, the empty, people, who could, who would eat out part later. So they could use this other entrance for all the other ways, and we'd use that, we'd use that. They got both, it's a different entrance.
Remember, so how did we get here? We got here because there were some issues when they started doing that dialysis, that had to be environmental. In that environmental study, as required, they identified some utility easements that were there that they didn't correct it. So we asked Mr. Martinus, correct it, and come back with something that's clean, so we don't have to look in the future. So by breaking out four ways, those four lot, those two lots that are free, are free of any easement, they're free for construction. So if we ever have another project to do, they're clean and ready to go.
Yeah.
They're, they're clean, so we don't have to be going back and forth. So he had to clean up all of the deed, he still got credit all of the deed. But those two lots are to remain like brand new and clean, they're ready to go, and ready to go for other projects.
You, you, you try to squeeze the way it's made out, it has to be ready to go. The way it was done, and I know that the county took over, and I know it's, you know, you gotta fix it, but, no, they're, they're fixing all the fault.
Because, because one of the things that's happening with this coronavirus, there's gonna be a lot of money being stimulated about the purpose of development. You know, it may be a chance of where you wanna get a purchase, and it's possible to be able to get a purchase, and it's, it's a property on those lots. You wanna have clean and ready to go, or something that's happened. There's gonna be a lot of money for the third goal, to be very competitive to go, so you wanna make sure you get all this corrected, that way you can be ready to move forward.
Yeah, like, yeah.
So there's gonna be.
I think, I think, Corrigan did the best he could, because they're wired like that, the only other way, they're gonna be dead, and you think, they're gonna be dead. I'm trying to do it when I, after it later on, you know, when they merge it to his roof in the back, or when you do it later on. Yeah, but they would, he, he can't.
I think that would be an easy comparison, you decided by lot, lot, that property, that's. For your county, that's.
There's a brush, what do we get, the other? I make the most. So motions been made, uh, can you get a margin? It, it's just a correction of the, of the deed, of the replat. Uh,
Second.
And second, all those in favor say aye. Only. All those opposed, then sign. So now, in the benign discussion and our possible action update of Enhamin Road Project, Holland Dam, uh, Bridge Replacement, Valley Wells Project, and Quichina, uh, Bridge Replacement, and include consideration of the position of these projects to text dot grant project.
This, this is just an updated item, uh, to update the commissioners in the county with all the district projects. And Haddene, as we know, commissioner is under construction, they're, they're working on a couple of the structures right now, the smaller ones. But that project will be ongoing for the next, I believe, nine months. Uh, so that, that's already ongoing. Holland Dam Bridge, uh, I have a copy of the improvements to the abutments. Uh, I know this is a project that's listed on one of the, the text out grants that are coming up. Uh, and I could talk to more detail at that point, but we've already issued, where we have a drawing ready for the abutments to improve the, both sides of Holland Dam Bridge, and, and that's where we're at on that, and I could go over that with the commissioner, and depending on the funding. And if this, if the county does get money, we can actually move it forward. Um, like Quichina Bridge Replacement, the last item that was, uh, presented to Commissioners Court, that, that, I'm not mistaken, there was a, a letter that was being brought to the landowner, uh, which began right away, I don't know if that's been moved forward or not. We are authorized for that work, but we haven't commenced, cause I know that was one of the, the things that we needed to get out to the landowner to address the, uh, right away for that piece of property that that bridge is. Uh, if there's any updates on that, let us know, uh, if, if we are good to go on, so we can go ahead and move forward. For now, it is on hold until we know, we can start moving forward on that one bridge that we have.
One of the concerns I have on a project, and we gotta submit this to text dot, is, for example, this time around, there's only seven million dollars that we agreed to share, share alike. And in submitting this to text dot, I'm probably listening that you have, you have number one Valley Wells, three Quichina, three Holland Dam, four Lenwick Road, uh, you got Fager Road, Coconut Road, Holland Dam Road, Natus Road, Johnson Road, Coconut Road, so you have a, a large list of projects, and I know Mr. Snowden's been working with them. But one of the things that I have is that text dot's gonna say, okay, we're gonna give you the seven million, but we expect you to do the first two projects, and then the other commissioners are out. So, are we gonna be able to split four ways on this?
So, the exercise out, and someone's on the call, you know, um, one of the things we'd like to do is, is give you up the projects list, get the priority projects, give them up, so that it's equally shared, uh, by the commissioner, the amount of money that you're gonna get. So, as an example, Valley Wells, obviously, we did the whole project under this grant, it would completely take that and more money to, to do it. So what we're, we're proposing, and what we've been looking at, is estimating how much, forget about, you know, more or less a two and a half million dollar project for Valley Wells, which would probably be about two miles of the first segment from the highway, is propose that as a project to text dot. So if the funding does come in, as for example, on project number one, that would be something that would get funded alone. And it would only be, you know, the two and a half million. The commissioner, all the commissioners would have the same, the same exercise, we would try to budget for them to have a project.
They're like ten million, I mean, no, over, over seven million, or come, say, two point five million.
It, it was, uh, if I'm not, Tony, Tony, you know the exact amount?
Well, what, what do you look at, your budget amount, if you talk to, about ten million dollars?
Including the math.
Yeah, that's right, including the math, for it. Including the math.
That's, that's give or take, so the idea is to budget several projects, and this more.
We might have another second round.
Another round, and I know Tony, uh, I talked to you.
Well, I, I think there will be a second round. So, um, one of the things is the county's need to do the math. And Jeff, I hadn't talked to you in so long, and I've got Mike, Shaw, I've got different minds here. But I was thinking of using Andy Brown to do some public information requests in the other counties that have been funded, to see if they did the road reports. And I hate to be back and it's like, you know, repetitive of what happened last time, but I wanna know if, you know, if, if we should ask some of these other counties that are applying, cause they have a very short schedule to do the road reports, if they did a road report last year and this year. And if they did, then, then, was it on file with the district clerk? Because if we do an open record request to these other counties, it should be to the district clerk, and hey, we have a road re- bridge on filing. What I have found, district clerks usually are very, very, uh, thorough when dealing with documents, because they deal with not only the county government, but the state court system as well. And if a report was not filed, because these reports are supposed to be under oath, your district clerk tend to be a lot stronger minded than anybody else that I know. So, if we do an open record request to these other counties, say, hey, did your commissioners file a report? Then it's possible you're not gonna have the amount of applicants from these other counties that never did what they were supposed to apply these forms because they got these requests accepted. And maybe I'm off the wall.
Well, Judge, uh, I don't know if I can be heard there, this is Donato Junior. My, my only concern with that, Judge, is that, uh, you know, as, as we all know, we tried to take on text dot two or three or four years ago, whatever it was. And that, and the result in that order from the court basically said unfortunately that from a legal standpoint, and, and it hurts me to admit this, but according to what the Austin Court of Appeals said, that text dot can pretty much do what they want, and, and they have, I mean, not in those words, but that was the, the effect of their, of their ruling, which is that they have extreme discretion in all of those things. So, I agree that it might be worthwhile to, to do the initial steps from a fact gathering standpoint. As long as we all know, ultimately, we do have some rather bad legal precedent that we're up against.
Yeah, to follow up, to follow up.
The only thing, I'm sorry. The only thing I would add to that is that at a minimum, we'll tell text dot, we're watching you, and in hopes that in the future, they'll be more sensitive to, uh, uh, requiring these road, open, these, uh, road reports. Anyway, that's it, I'm sorry, I stepped on somebody's.
The only thing I was gonna follow up on, on, uh, what, uh, Don Junior said was you really can't sue text dot unless there's a clear statute that says you can sue them, in this case, there's not. And then, i- if there's not a suit, i- if there's not a statute that authorized, that we're gonna have to establish that they had no discretion, and they violated the law, or failed to do something that they're mandatorily, uh, obligated by law to do. Um, but I, I agree that, that this initial step of legwork is a good idea. It may even give us some basis to go to some of their district engineers and say, why don't you compare what you're doing for, for other counties with what you're doing for us? Uh, can you give us some explanation for why you're treating them better than you're treating LaSalle County? Just to at least get a conversation started, and as Donato Senior said, it lets them know that we're keeping a close eye on them.
Because, what we noticed last time, was that people were doing the road report, and here again, uh, among the listener, different judges, like she would bounce bass, and Allison or up there. And you have a rush to do road reports all over again, when they were required by law either in June or September of last year. And then you start looking how they break up some of funding, proposed funding, you have a county in West Texas, which your population has never been in excess of two hundred, getting ten million dollars, and you know that two or three people doesn't need a lot of roadway systems. So very likely, it could be one or two roads in the county, because that road's been very, very, uh, because there's nobody out there. So, in essence, they brought them to do the road reports, and, but yet, they're already awarded ten million dollars to serve less than two hundred people. I was, I was looking at Loving County. I mean, you've been to Loving County, how many county roads do you know are out there? And, zero, it's, I mean, it's almost none. But yet, how do you break up and make this honest? Well, the state many years ago set a procedure requirement to do the road reports. What we found out, the last ten years, so we didn't do the road reports, filed them, going to the deed. But yet, it is applied very relaxed throughout the state. So, the legislature says you have to have a road report for positive money, but there's no consequences for not doing it. So the only advantage may be in getting the ear of text dot here, here from the South County again. Well, last year we brought issues, and we held text dot, you know, and made them responsible. Well, maybe we didn't get all the road projects we did, but we got a lot of infrastructure projects, highway projects, FM road project. So basically, the D E, you know, disagrees. So, if we feel that text dot's not gonna, um, comply, and, you know, it's gonna let everybody apply, well, you know what, let's do a little bit of research, a little class, let's kind of get after them a little bit. And I guarantee you, maybe we'll get some bridges, we haven't been awarded an office of some road bridge in over ten years. In over ten years, and all these bridges that we've been replacing are over twenty feet, are the responsibility of text dot, they were having to infer them itself. So what does it take to bring text dot to, to, uh, you know, to the table? Sometimes we gotta be a little noisy, make, you know, be the bully screaming in the playground, and they're gonna come set us up. Maybe it'll work, it, you know, it helped last time, I can't help. But here they are asking us to do everything right, we're trying to do everything right, but yet, because of the politics statewide, you know, you know, we're not easy to be, uh, you know, granting everything that we do, regardless of.
Judge, uh, this is Jeff Snowden, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Just wanted to add to that, when I spoke with text dot regarding auditing of the files, the, the statement from them was, if anyone audits procurement specifically or anything else, it will be the comptroller's office, not text dot.
Basically, these funds that are given by the legislature, text dot can be forced to be administrator, and there's no big money in it, so they want, they have the babies of this money, and they do not wanna do it, so they just wanna get it out there. They wanna get it off their dad.
That was the impression I got, yes.
Paper, and Mr. Robles, what he did, when we sued him last time, he went to hearing, he asked, he asked a guy, and he's still in there, and he's still in charge, he says, that all you did was get a rubber stamp, and the guy said, yes. He said, yes. And they're doing it the same thing, it's still consequence. The only consequence is if they don't wanna do it in the South County, then he has to be placed, or thing, and he has. But, but we have to be a payment of, and we have to ask these questions, otherwise we're never heard. So unless we continue to pressure saying, hey, we want our share in the funding, we've worked hard, you know, we wanna get rewarded for, well, what we're, we're doing, you know, they won't pay attention to it. Cause I doubt.
I, I, I will say, it, it, I mean, it's been almost thirty years since I was actually a lawyer representing text dot, but the, the two things that always concerned district engineers was local governmental entities coming to them and saying, it appears you're treating us inconsistently. And then a follow-up call, letter, and now I guess an email from a state legislator, state senator saying, seems like my governmental entities aren't being treated fairly. Because, o- obviously, every year, every session, that the text dot's gotta go over and, and make sure that the, the ledge is happy with them. And so, a- a- again, I, I, I think the way to push this may be to do the legwork, get a meeting with the district engineer down there, sit down and say, here's what we found, and then potentially have a follow-up from a legislator saying, why are my folks getting a raw deal?
See, we already met with the district engineer, we already did that.
Okay.
And and they all guarantee we're being treated the best, they won't show any documents, they can't. So, do we go higher and say, hey, you know, you know, what are you doing?
Judge.
Do, do, do we know, i- do we have connections to anybody on the, on the commission?
I think so, I mean, we got state reps and senators that have connections.
Okay, well.
Where is our district engineer?
District is, uh, David Salas.
Little query here, Laredo?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It, look, if you're not getting any, i- if you're not getting any help from your district engineer, then it never hurts to talk to a member of the commission whose story is always gonna be, I would be shocked if it was anything else, boy, we're stretched thin, you know, but if you can at least present some evidence to them, and say, here's what our concern is, if they start calling a district engineer, I, I will, uh, district engineers always sit up and take notice when they get either a call from the, the, the engineer director. when they get either a call from the, the engineer director of the, of tech stock or a member of the transportation commission.
Well, it shouldn't cost too many money. It's a mere allocation of funds.
Yeah.
No, yeah, it just.
Yeah, that's.
One area over another.
Yeah.
Let me give you an example. They have a program called the BIS for Bridge Strap Program. So all bridges in the county that are over 20 feet are considered state bridge. And the last thing we had is done on Wahoo Co. Road, not Wahoo Co., on Holland Dam Road. About $3 million or so. Now Commissioner Ramirez has a bridge on Elm Creek that he needs to be redone. And it might be low bought in about $2 million. Commissioner Alba has one on Fortina Road, about $2 million. And, and you see them allocating these state funds that are supposed to go roads to fix bridges that are responsible with text doc. But when you ask text, text doc, he hasn't funded us because they're supposed to fund it every two years. And people already replace the number. So in essence, we've been pushing our community and state tax dollars to replace state bridges because if we don't fix them, those landowners can't go to their property. So what happens if we decide, okay, we're not going to do these bridges, the state bridge, let text doc do it, and let the local companies complain that they can't go through, and we'll do something else, you know? There, there's, we've been more worried about making sure that the rancher has access to the ranch because if these bridges fail, in some cases, the landowners don't have to be able to have access. Like on the Holland Dam side, if the river's running, those people won't have any way to get out unless they're sending to get rid of people property. And so it, it's one of those things that's just a very bitter sweet. Oh, yeah, you're, you're giving us this money, but the portion of this money, we're using it to, to, to pay off or fix what their responsibility is. And that's a state responsibility. So I mean, so one of the things is that we started last time, we started on the fact finding mission, see where they stand. And some counties just applied because they wouldn't lie on the report. We do these reports, you got, you got reports. And there were some counties, the last one, he said, look, we didn't do what we're supposed to. We're not going to apply. Other people don't care. So they'll, they'll see funding no matter what. Um, you know, can we keep them all on it? Probably not, but, but, but if, if it would help, you know, I want to go back and look at some of my last reports and look at fiscal years of some of the other counties and then see if they learned from last time. It used, it used to be when you did a grant, you did a very competitive grant. A lot of federal grants are that way. You apply, like Senator Unison, I would qualify in Cudulla. It was only one of the two in the nation that got funded, very competitive grant. So you were competing with all the US counties. Well, they did with text doc, but it's not a grant. It's more like the submission papers, there's to get something. So it's more like, like this care action we're getting or stimulus we're getting from the federal government. It's not a grant, it's a stimulus. Turn in 200 pieces of paper and we'll fund you. So what the state has to decide, are they really grants or are they more just a distribution based on a calculated percentage? And if it's just a distribution, don't make us go through all these steps. Cause you're making us spend a lot of money when it carries no weight. So that's my two cents worth. What do you think, Judge?
Was that for me, Judge?
Yeah.
So we've got the, the draft list prepared and then I've, I've got the draft application prepared and dated with the date of next Friday. So you've got some time to review it. The, the agreement that text doc would want LaSalle County to execute allows us to revise our project list throughout the five-year term to, to deliver the project. So we've got flexibility. And main thing I want to do is speak one more time with the commissioners. And, and Jorge is also talking with them so we can make sure that what ends up on the list we submit is consistent with what they want to fund.
Jeff, do you know if James Bass, the executive director, is related to Lee Bass?
No, no, I don't know him, I've heard the name.
I, I don't know that, Donato.
Okay, cause he's from, James Bass is from Fort Worth and Lee Bass obviously is from Fort Worth. I just wondered if there was some connection. I can, I could call Lee Bass for what it's worth. But anyway, that's just, just a thought.
I think it's important to reach out to them before the end of the funding cycle because we reached out to them or any conservative other project. We're having to use state project projects that should be used for county roads to fix bridges that are their responsibility. You know, it'd be great if we could get these commitments for the state bridges and we wouldn't have to continuously use taxpayer dollars more to do that. You know, if Commissioner Alba, Commissioner Ramirez could get the Elm Creek and Fortuna Bridge fixed, if the state expressed the state bridge, then they could do another project or you could do another project. You know, if you could fix that project and, and the state would take the responsibility for the Fortuna Bridge, then you could spend that $2 million of K V, you know, along up in the city of Cincinnati. Or we could do some other K V around the city of Cudulla, you know? And the same thing, you got some bridges coming up. You got three bridges in PC1, on Galiwell. He probably has about three or four million, those bridges may be more expensive to fix. You got, the one on Galiwell, you got three above there. But why does the county continue to have to pay for text doc bridges? Uh, tax bill pockets, but it's their pocket. They put the low requirements, they're letting these oil rigs go through that weigh a hundred thousand aisle. The Missouri Dallas lost, the Free River Bridge has probably had to be replaced because that E O G rig is a hundred thousand pounds, what, a little too big? A little too big. So, so if you could help out, Mr. Ramos, try set up meetings with, with text doc or you, Mr. Shawna, see if you've got a connection there in Austin. We'll meet with them. We'll meet with them, but, but our bridge system has been really, really hit because most of these bridges were built in the 1930s and 40s during the depression. So it's over 100 years, 20s in some cases. So some of these bridges are over 100 years old, very narrow, not geared for whole field and and the condition is deteriorated.
What do you think, open records request, just not push that now?
Let me put my thoughts together and I'll send it to you.
Is there a downside to sending them?
I, I don't think so. I, I still think that just the idea that we're monitoring what they're doing and so forth shows an interest that no other county in the state is showing. And maybe they'll be a little more sensitive to us.
But, but last time he said, text doc, yes, information, we didn't attach the results of recipient. Text doc didn't have the case that has recipient from A to Z county. If we sent an open record request, I would consider to determine, let them do the request for A and B last year and this year. And if some of these counties will realize that, you know what, I haven't done what I needed to do. I want to do advice, we're not going to play. It may make the pot go higher. If, if it's in two cycles, it may set some other funding aside to work. Next year they do the report and they qualify. But it may make this pot bigger for us. I'm really just, uh, my sister might as well, she didn't want to buy because she hadn't done what she did needed to build. Plus they also have to come up with a 20% match. This thing is current in many counties. This care act, I mean, this coronavirus, it's going to hurt a lot of K V and they're not going to have the cash to do these projects. So we just got to be real careful. So it's a very short period and, you know, Jeff, I'll let you continue to explain. You need to explain what you're doing, but I would, I, I would, let's, let's think about it, but I have to be really, really short out. I'll take the open record request.
Judge, we have from now till May 27th to submit the application. It's, it's ready and what I'd advise is that we submit it with the current projects and then we can revise those off once, for example, if some of the bridge funding were to come through. But it's important to lock in the 7.2 million now. And that's ready to go. And there's an agreement there and it will require, once they award the, the grant, we'll need a resolution from the commissioner's court with endorsing the agreement, which I'll, I'll draft up for you. But what I'd like to propose is that I send you the grant application and let you look it over and review it. Once you green light it, we can submit it electronically and kind of get ahead of the curve. Because as you stated, there are several counties that did not adopt road condition assessment reports. I know one of them in particular, and they're scrambling to do it now so they can submit on the grant. So it'd be good to get ahead of them.
That were, were required by statute for certain base. But because there's no ability on the commissioners, they're not done, but we've been doing them. The only thing that may benefit is that, that, that doing a squeaky wheel, text doc may say, you know what, we don't want the trouble with South County. Let's work for the bridges. And that's pretty much what happened with all this farming margin road that we got last year. So you don't want, let's continue working with South County. You know, we don't want trouble with them, you know, they're on top of their game. Well, let's continue to stay on top of the game. So maybe we don't get road bridges, but we get better on the market road. Well, that's fine, you take it.
Jeff, do you think we have a chance for the 7.2? Because what I was thinking, if we ask for 7.2 and we get it, we may be precluded from saying, hey, we should have gotten more.
Well, we've been to a number of meetings, I went with Jeff.
Or we'd be happy with 7.
We're asking for more. We're asking for more money, we're asking for 30 million, I believe. But the thing is, they have a formula based on production, horizontal, vertical rail, amount paid through your severance taxes, your weighted permits. So this allocation is based, based on the legislative formula that they, they did, only on that. And you're assuming everybody applies. When people fail to apply or counties fail to apply, they got to go back and reallocate those counties that didn't apply. And when they reallocate, it may go up, and that's why Jeff wants us to submit for 30 million, right? Jeff?
That's exactly right, Judge. So we want to be ahead of, right now, Donato, to answer your question, the county was allocated 7.2 million with a promise for another visit once they receive all. Right now, the assumption is all 254 counties will apply and be eligible and be able to write the check for their match. That obviously is not likely to happen. So there'll be a, a second pot of money split up after all the applications are processed, which should take place 14 days after May 27.
Okay. And, and at what point in time, Jeff, do you think if we were to start asking questions, should we do that? Because here's the only concern that I have. If we ask for the open records request now and then we are submitting it in application, is that going to reflect negatively on that application for us?
I have your side, your same hesitation. My, my sense would be that we get an executed grant agreement for the 7.2 million and then issue the FOIAs, the open records request.
The open record request would be sent to every individual county. They're not going to text doc. So you're going to send it to the Freo County District Attorney, to the Wata County District Attorney, Dimmitt County, Eagle Pass, if your commissioners file a road report.
And the, and the Public Information Act, it didn't need to come from LaSalle County. I mean, you know, it could come from anybody. I mean, we can send it out, anybody on this call can send it out for you. And we don't even have to identify our, our client is.
Cause they, when you do an open record request, they don't have to tell you why you're changing, you don't have to ask why you request them. You know, but.
And text doc's not going to know.
I just don't want to prejudice whatever grant we may be getting to where they say, no, you know what, we're only going to give you 4.5 or whatever.
Oh, they can't change that, they can't change that.
I could get my next door neighbor to, to apply for it.
No, no, but you can't, I mean, West County has allocated a mother better to get. But this, this is like, as an example, at, at your ranch, you have a state bridge, but the county maintains it. And text doc has a pool that identifies monies to fix that bridge when it's no longer safe. But that bridge is one of your ranches, state bridge. Uh, what text doc is doing is they're forcing the county to make the decision to use the grant money to fix that bridge, which was always their responsibility. And that's what's happening with some of our money is that we're having to use this grant money to fix state bridges, uh, consider state bridges. And, oh yeah, you got to do it, but you know what, part of the community was to fix their property. So they really want to help, I mean, they need to carry their weight and throw responsibility and fix their bridges. So if you could open a door with executive directors who can explain it to them, that'd be great.
Well, I don't know him, I, I know Lee Bass and they may not even be related, but I figure Bass, that's not a very popular name, Fort Worth, they're both from Fort Worth, I don't know, maybe.
Well, and, and they're certainly wealthy enough to, to get on the Transportation Commission.
Yeah.
This, this is what, what happened with these projects, Mr. Ramos, Mr. Shawna, see, is that most of these legislators do not have any local experience. Many of them don't understand local taxation and funding. So when they make the decision, and I've noticed we saw the testimony, they, they had testimonies from people that really had very little government knowledge, experience with taxation. And, and they're all wanting information, but they don't understand how they impact counties. And so you end up with a funding bill, yes, it's good, but it's not what it should be. The only variation for the last bill was that your, your search and tiers were no longer there. Otherwise it could say my medical bill. So even on all legislation, I mean, all the legal action that you took in enrollment, bringing text doc, text doc didn't do anything different. It's just a repeat of the last cycle, we lost the tiers or the search. So, um, so basically Jeff, you want to, you're going to go ahead and submit it, right? Your application, you're going to file it, you're going to submit it?
Yes, sir, I'm asking the court to authorize that and I would need to send it down to you because you have to submit it electronically.
All right. So then we would do a motion to authorize you to submit. All right, so then we would do a motion to authorize you to submit the, uh, the grant application. Or, or complete the grant application so you can file it. Make that motion. There's a second. Any further discussion? All those, favor say aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed, same side, motion carrier. So the only thing we have left are the bills, minutes and reports.
That's bill.
Yep. Should be that little bill. What do you wanna have next meeting, next Thursday? You wanna do it next Thursday, in the morning? Ten AM? Three weeks? Oh, in the morning? In the morning? So our, our next meeting would be May seventh at ten AM. Ten AM?
Who's the date again, Judge, I'm sorry?
May seventh, ten AM.
With? Next Thursday at ten AM?
Yeah. No, okay, does it be next Thursday?
May, we'd be excused, Judge. Good afternoon, everybody, good to see y'all, y'all have a good evening.
Take care and please be safe.
Thank you, you too, and everybody, and you too, Jeff.
Thank you, gentlemen, y'all have a good day.
Y'all, Jeff and Mike to you.
Hello? Cut off the call since one.
You right? There we go. I got something. Don't forget to. You think you heard me? I thought I saw the telephone. He's taking advantage of it. This is a long meeting. I got something. Huh? Crossing.
What is it?
Yeah, on the A. Yes, I got it, okay. I'm so full of minutes. I make the motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made, second. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Second. We stay adjourned, motion carries.